...to the regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, November 17, 2021, here at 5:30 PM in the high school auditorium. Do you have a roll call, please, Tammy?
Senator Ochsner, here. Lisa Volpe, here. Brett Waller, here. Lizzy Gilling, here. Doug Ashworth, here. Chad Sinker, here. Tom Liberty, here. Kevin Lee, here.
Please join me, stand at your age, face the life of a pledge of allegiance to this. I pledge allegiance to the right of Americans, states of America, and to the great cause for which stands my nation, our God, and visible, and true religion. Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Area Public School Board of Education meeting. Now, to be special to all our elected board members, turn in the function of our board meeting. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all inhabitants. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sample. At the beginning of every meeting, we allocate fifteen minutes or so for public comment to the board. We do have a couple of people that we will call up this evening, and just as a reminder, we appreciate your participation in the school board meeting this evening. Public comment period is an important time for the board to hear the concerns of its constituents. Nevertheless, prior to making a statement during the public comment period, you may wish to consider whether the content of your speech should be harmful to an individual person, and if so, whether that person could have a legal claim against you related to the statement you made this evening. We have been advised that the Wisconsin Supreme Court has issued a rule that there is no absolute privilege to protect the mandatory comments by speakers at board meetings such as this. Therefore, please be aware that your speaker bears the personal risk of anything here she says during the public comment period of the school board meetings, if mandatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. Thank you. At this time, I will call on our first person, who would be Amy Van Alstine. Can you come up to the front table and microphone, please?
Hi there, my name is Amy Van Alstine, and I stand before you as a member of Merrill Community and a teaching staff as well, and a parent of students in the community. I am, today is my first day back after COVID, and I wanted to say I'm here to remind my coworkers who picked up the pieces while I was out for seven school days, because we have a very shortage of substitutes in our district, and other people had to give up their time with their students and their prep periods to cover my job. I do have some major concerns regarding the latest board policy that came out on Friday regarding communication with the Health Department. I was kind of blown away as I was at home when I got that, so I went to the DPI website, and they have a document that was released on October 29th, 2021, so very recent. And some of the highlights that I took away from that is that if Stanford students test positive, they should stay home if they have symptoms, they tested positive, were exposed within fourteen days and not vaccinated, we should be wearing a mask for fourteen days or a negative test. Six feet is the policy or the recommendation for if you're unvaccinated, which all of my students are because they're just, they were just irrationally able to get their first dose if they chose to do so. Three feet is only the policy if we're masking and cohorting, which we're not at this time. When Stanford students, another, this is a pretty long document, eighteen pages, when Stanford students test positive and contact the Health Department to discuss the appropriate management of and cooperate fully with the state or local Health Department contact tracing efforts. You've made that impossible for me as a person who works in the buildings here at that mass. My daughter tested positive, and they called me on Monday morning, and I had no idea what to do, because I read that policy and thought if I speak to them, I could lose my job because of that policy, and I don't think that that's fair. We all have families that we go home to, and she's very sick right now, and I don't think it's fair that I can't talk to the Health Department about contact tracing, her teammates, the people that she just prospered with, and her classmates at school. So I did not share any names. I was willing to share names, but they wouldn't even take the names from me at this time. And I wonder why, why was that policy put into place? And I wonder, I'd have to keep going back, I wonder if it's personal political affiliations or ambitions that are determining our judgment. As an example, on October night, board member Brett Waller appeared as a guest on the Meg Ellison conservative radio show. He was listed as a guest from the Merrill School Board. I was bothered by that, because I felt like as a board that we should be not political or we should be partisan. The board policy states that the board president functions as the official spokesperson for the board, so I guess in that role, I was wondering why Brett was the person on the radio show and not Kevin as the board president. Under board ethics policies, there are point I states that you should avoid being placed in a conflict of interest and refrain from using their board position for personal partisan gain. And I just wonder what the role of that ten-minute conversation on that show was, if it wasn't to further personal political ambitions. Point J says we should take no private action that will compromise the board or the administration. And when I heard that that was out there, and I listened to that ten-minute call, I was appalled, because it is a very right-leaning show, and as a board, I believe that you have to be in the middle. You have to put your personal preferences and alliances aside and make decisions what's best for all of our kids. And point K says, remember that always, your first and greatest concern is to be for the educational welfare students attending public schools. I have an eleven-year-old at home that can't get out of bed. She is sick with COVID, and I tried to get her out of bed the last few days to access her school, but was not able to. So I'm asking you to reconsider some of your policies regarding COVID. Last year, we sent our daughter to Bridges Virtual Academy, she didn't get sick, I didn't get sick, we were masking. This year, there's no masks, there's nothing in place to keep us safe. And I did read some of the ESSR and some of the different things, and I was wondering if we're going to be put at risk like this, and we're going to constantly be put in harm's way if we could ask for hazard pay. Because right now, I don't feel that we're being kept safe in our, in our role at school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions? I don't see any hands up. Thank you for your time, Amy. Next, I'd like to call up Christine Borbaco. Christine, if you'd come up to the front table by the microphone as well, please.
I'll reiterate, Christine Borbaco, and 2227 over Bridge Avenue. I'm confused, and this isn't my topic, but I'm confused by your policy too. It says we're supposed to wear masks, but you don't have any on. I'm confused, so I reiterate, if I'm confused as the general public, I can't imagine how the staff is. I'll take this off, because apparently it's not necessary. Mine is again on communication. I placed a call to the administration building, left an email, excuse me, I tried that, that didn't work. I left a voice message, didn't get a call back. I was on your website, you loved going and saying, oh, just check our website, go to the Facebook page. Guess what? It ain't up to date. I tried, I tried to be, when I show up at meetings, I try to do some background work. Guess what? Tonight's agenda, it was there, but if I wanted to go to the notes to dig a little deeper, not available. I think whoever's running your website, they mistake that you aren't able to edit or the notes with somebody being able to click on it. I'm of the, I call it the generation that we have to do internet digital, we don't want to, but that's the way our world works. I could not get it to work. So, I, I, again, thank you. Six months ago, I talked on this, very much so, greater communication. Do you know I had several parents with students that go, I don't know, I have somebody spoke on that. I am a parent of a student, and I didn't know some stuff until I read it elsewhere. You are doing better, but not good enough. I suggest some of you ask somebody else to go to your website. Guess what? On your students, it says, if you're going to register your child for the 2020, 2021 school year, make sure they're five years old by September 1st of 2020. Come on. Administrative assistant, maybe a student could go on there and correct some of those minor details. I took down my own website, because I do not have time to keep it up to date. I know it's a nuisance and all that, but if you keep saying, go to our website, go to our Facebook page, look, then that half, if you're waving that as your flagship way to communicate with you, rather than a message, because I didn't get a call back all day today, or I just again suggest somebody spend time, ask your friend, go ahead, because I hear say you probably have been to the website long enough that it's no longer needed you. Go ask a friend to go on to the website and try to find out what tonight's agenda is about. Yes, I did come, because I did fill out my particular, the survey, so I thought I should chill out. Oh, and I couldn't find out much about that, other than it is on at six o'clock, so thank you whoever did that. I just, you took a few steps forward the last time I spoke, but take a few more, take a few more, and make sure you are communicating to the best of your ability to your parents, the constituents, and others in this particular, just, thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Any clarifying questions from the public comment?
I have one.
We have one. Brett, go ahead.
Are you saying you couldn't find tonight's agenda?
I did eventually find it, but then go to the part where it says notes, and I wanted to read some of the particular notes under some of the agenda items. I clicked on, guess who could not get on it? And the link does not work, and I thought perhaps whoever's doing it only makes that available to people who have access to change notes or things. But I could not read further into some of the items.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Next on our agenda this evening is recognition. Tonight, the board would like to recognize Elizabeth Schmidt for going to state for cross-country. Liz took fourteenth out of one hundred and fifty-one athletes at the District 2 WIA Cross-Country State Meet on Saturday, October 30th. Congratulations, we're proud of you, Liz. Would you like to share with the audience on your experiences of traveling to states? What the conditions were like that day?
Bridges was at Kelly Forest on this last weekend, you know, the normal course for state. Other than that, I thought it was pretty good. I like Gulf Coast grab, it's pretty nice, other than our girls at high schools, but yeah, I thought it was a beautiful day too, it was like fifty-five degrees, no snow, so yeah, thank you.
Congratulations. Next on our agenda this evening is Student Board of Education Representative Reports. If I could ask Amelia and Isaiah to come up to the table and tell us a little bit about what's going on in Merrill High School.
Hello. In the first meeting this year, I brought up Link Crew and how important it is and all of the activities they do with freshmen to get them to participate in school. In the past Link Up, which is where the Link Crew leaders go into the advisors and talk to the freshmen, they were very focused on gratitude with Thanksgiving coming up. They had kids play a game where they wrote down what they were thankful for, and guess who wrote it for a prize of a school cookie? They also had the freshmen write thank you cards to a teacher. This was to get them focused on who has made an impact on them as a student and person, and to show how much we appreciate our Merrill High School staff. Swim has come to a close with some exciting new records. Grace Schultz now holds a school record in the 200 IM, and Claire Schultz holds it in the 53 and 200 medley. These were all completed at state. Speaking of state, for the third year in a row, Liz Schmidt has gone to state for cross-country, and this year placed fourteenth out of everyone. New seasons are also kicking off, as some come to a close, such as wrestling, which now includes a boy and girls team, which is new, hockey and boys and girls basketball. In preparation for the future, juniors and seniors have been touring many college campuses, including NTC, UW Stevens Point, UW Lacrosse, UW Milwaukee, Madison, Eau Claire, and Notre Dame, which are all popular schools that Merrill students go on to attend. Through these school tours, the students have the ability to go with fellow classmates and look around potential schools they may attend. Many students appreciate this opportunity to help them decide where they want to attend college.
The fall play was put on by the Theodore Jays again this year. The play was called She Kills Monsters. This play portrays the story of Agnes Evans, a girl who tries to get to know more about her sister Tilly, following Tilly's tragic death. The play was a huge success, and many high schoolers got the joy of being able to either be in the play or watch it. This past weekend, three members of the Merrill Blue Jays football team, Brian Ball, Caden Deals, and Bailey Chirine, had the opportunity to take part in a quarterback challenge at Lambeau Field during halftime of the Packers game against Seattle. Merrill took part in the challenge against three members of the Annacole football team. The challenge was simple, each team had two chances to try to complete a pass, and the team who completed the longest pass would win. Both teams missed on their first attempts, but both teams completed their second. Merrill's pass, however, was about fifty yards compared to Annacole's forty yards. Merrill won the challenge and came home with a prize of $500 for the football program.
Thank you, guys. Any board members have any questions or discussion for Amelia and Isaiah? All right, thank you, guys, we appreciate all the updates. Next on our agenda this evening is administrative reports, just a reminder, board members frequently ask questions prior to tonight's meeting, but any clarifying questions or things that they would like on the record could be asked as Dr. Sample introduces his topics. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Sample. Below, you'll find the administrative reports as provided to you last week. One special note, we will not have a Board of Education opportunity from our instructional coaches, they were going to present tonight, but too many of them are out sick or quarantined, and so we will table that until next month. Does anybody have any questions about any board reports prior to my superintendent's report? My topic summary sheet, again, monthly activities and meetings that I've attended at the time of this report, there was no Maple Grove update, but we will be in closed session, and that is a topic for closed session. Referendum survey timeline, Bill Foster from School Perceptions will be sharing the summary of the referendum survey a little bit later this evening. The administrative team is working right now to identify any budget cuts for the 2223 school year, in the event that the board adopts a resolution to go to a referendum, and in the event that referendum should fail due to $3 million deficit for next year. We're also compiling a list of frequently asked questions that will be put on our website should the board adopt the resolution to proceed. I covered some information regarding personnel rounding, administrative evaluation progress to date. Unfortunately, this last time since the last board meeting, I have not been able to be visible in our buildings. You can see the all meeting agenda notes, and you can see the central office administrative meeting and agendas, and also the weekly bulletins for the staff since the last board meeting. Any questions regarding the superintendent's report? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sample. Next on our agenda this evening is committee reports. Start with the Facilities Committee, we have attached draft minutes for the November 3rd committee meeting. Myself as chair and other members of that. Facilities Committee are available. Any board members have questions, put the Facilities Committee this evening. Hearing none, we'll move to the Finance Human Resources Committee. Attached were the draft minutes for the November 3rd committee meeting. Board members that were present for that meeting are available for questions. Does anyone have any questions for the Finance Human Resources Committee this evening? Hearing none, we'll move to the CTP, or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee. The draft minutes were attached from the November 10th committee meeting. Maria Volpe is chair, and other members of the CTP committee are available for questions. Any board members have questions on the CTP meeting minutes?
Maria? Maybe I have the wrong, the minutes were not from CTP, and I'm sorry, it was a total wrong, and maybe I'm just misdirected. I think the superintendent report is attached.
Okay. Can I make a note of the attachment change? Thanks, Maria. Any other discussion with CTP or questions? Okay, thanks. We'll move on to the agenda, next is unfinished business, which we do not have any under that category at this time. So we will start the agenda topics of Board of Education business. We will start with School Perceptions presentation and review of findings from referendum survey results. I'd like you, Sample, to introduce our guest this evening. Certainly, our guest is Bill Foster from School Perceptions. Many of you will remember Bill, he worked with us about four years ago with the same referendum survey service that he provides, and so he'll interpret those results tonight for us, and looking forward to hearing what you have to say, Bill.
Well, great, thanks for having me back again tonight. Actually, within my notes, I was here in 2008 as well with Sally Sernstrom, so, I guess I'm getting my, my ears getting a little grayer, but same guy. So my job tonight is to take you through what the survey said, the survey just went out this fall, so if you can scroll forward. Again, School of Perceptions, we've been around for, we just had our twentieth birthday, and we've now done over eight hundred of these surveys for the sake of strategic planning and refer and preparation, so we've done a few of these. Next slide. So your survey went out in October, it was a shorter survey, it looked like, if I could run off of our data entry table, it looked like this, it was four pages. We had just over 2,000 responses, eleven hundred and eighty-four came back via paper, which gave us a participation rate of twenty percent. So the question is, is that good? The answer is it's very good. From a statistical standpoint, when you hit 400, the data kind of locks in, when you get to 2,000, it's very good. And we have a margin of error plus or minus 2.3 percent, and I did go back and check in 2007, we had sixteen hundred and eighty-three surveys, so we were up about 400 surveys over the last four years. So let's take a look at what it said. So the first question we asked is, do you live in the district? Eighty-seven percent of our sample said yes, we do, and thirteen percent said we don't, which raises the question, who are these people taking your survey? Do they live in our district? The answer is really two areas, one is staff, all staff were asked to participate, and if a parent chooses to open and roll into the maps in Merrill Schools, they would have taken the survey, but we're going to remove any non-residents from the funding support question, because they can't vote, so, but we did ask some overall satisfaction questions of wanting to get their input on. Next slide, if you're an employee, we had 303 employees, or fifteen percent of our sample, which is good. Next slide. We had just over 700 parents, or thirty-five percent of our sample did the survey. We then also asked a question, which city or township do you reside? Here we had representation from really all, all the townships, including some little ones in Towne and Bielsa, and I think there's just a few people out there. We did check this against, and it does look like this is pretty representative of the districts, we felt like everyone was covered here. And then we asked the age question, when I look at this slide, I always go to the far right, I want to make sure our seniors are well represented in the data, and actually in your data, your seniors are overrepresented. But when it comes to voting, seniors are overrepresented, especially as compared to the eighteen to twenty-five-year-olds. So older people tend to take surveys, they tend to vote, and so we're really happy to see that skewing older with the surveys. Next slide. So when we put this report together, everything that was in the survey is in the report, so the information we're going to scroll through here is all the background information that was in the survey itself. So it talks about the fact that we've been paying down some loans to save some money on interest expense, the year bill rates declined since 2015, so that reduces the tax calculation on people's, what they're paying in property taxes. And then we went on to talk about that in 2018, residents did approve a four-year operational referendum, and operational referendum is, it's sunset, so after four years, it'll stop providing that funding, we explained that, and then we went to the, kind of the plan. So without a replacement referendum, and Dr. Sample said earlier, it's about a $3 million deficit that you're looking at, we tested three different options. Option one was renew at 2.5 million, that still would require some budget cuts, and the second option was renew at 3.25, that would retain most of your current programs and services, as well as some of the academic and mental health personnel added over the past years as a result of the available ESSR funds. And then option three was to renew at 3.75, which is really allowing you to kind of maintain what you currently have right now, but that would require some additional money. So then we asked that question, well, before we did that, I guess, we did put together this chart that kind of shows the corresponding tax impacts for each of the next fiscal years, and you're on a downward trajectory, and it's projected to continue, it'd be a little up in the first year, and then it's going to continue to down for each of the next four years. So then we get to the question itself, which option would you support? Now bear with me for a second, when we did the survey, it's overrepresented with staff, it's overrepresented with parents, and so to remove any bias, what we do is we create three mutually exclusive subgroups, so in other words, if you're a staff member, you're in that bottom bar, and then the next group would be parents, so if you're a staff and a parent, you're counted as staff. And if you're a parent, and then if you're not a parent and not a staff, you call into that top group, and the reason that's important, the top group represents the majority of your voters, in other words, probably about seventy-five percent of your community either work in the district or have kids in the district. So as a board member, when we look at this, you want to put much more weight in on what that group is saying than the other two. Now, staff is important, especially because they talk to their friends, neighbors, and parents every day, they would support a 3.25 million operating renewal. The parents, they're actually one percent over on the 3.25 million, but the most important group, again, the majority of your voters are in that top, non-parent, non-staff group, and the good news is they would certainly support the option one, which is the 2.5, but it would be a stretch to get those folks up to the 3.25 million dollar level. The other The other way to look at this chart is to go to the far right. You've got 12% of your staff, 21% of parents, and 27% of non-parent, non-staff that won't support anything, but that's not that bad. This is actually my sixth board meeting this week, believe it or not. And sometimes we see those who would not support anything, go up 30, 35, and close to 40%. And when you're in that situation, it's going to be very difficult to have support for anything. Apparently, the voters believe that you've done a relatively good job with the money that has been provided, so they're open to renewing that really as far as non-parent, non-staff at that 2.5 million level. Next slide. So in the event that you do need to make cuts, we identified really four areas here, and these are class sizes. So if class sizes go up, you don't need as much staff. Some people would be concerned with that, but that would be something the board would have to explore. Course offerings is another way to save money. You can just reduce what you're offering, which results in fewer classes, which results in larger class sizes and fewer teachers. You could reduce athletic and co-creek their offerings. The one thing I would say about that is your entire budget, I don't know what it is, in terms of funding athletics and co-creek their offerings, isn't going to close a $3 million gap. So you could eliminate absolutely everything. You still have a, oh wait, $2.5 million gap or something like that. And again, I don't know exactly what it is, but it is a rock and a thunder in terms of what you might be able to do. And the last one is staffing and professional support. Those are the folks who are supporting education, but not necessarily directly in the classroom doing the teaching, arguably very important to their student's school experience. So then we went to the groups. We asked, should the district consider? And then maybe you can scroll down. Each of those, and we have staff is in red, parents are in green, and then we have what we call our purple people, the non-parent, non-staff. Across the board, there's a strong no. A strong majority of people say no. Don't cut teachers and increase classes. We don't like that. Don't do that. The next one should reduce the AP and elective courses. Again, almost as strong as cutting teachers. Now, we want to be sure our kids have opportunities for advanced courses. So let, don't do that. How about reducing those athletics and co-creek their offerings? Here, you can see there's a little bit more support there. In fact, the non-parents are at a 50% no with 38% yes. But as I indicated earlier, there's not a lot of money to be had, but that is something the district could look at to help save some, save some money in the event that some cuts need to be made. And the last one is the cutting social workers and instructional coaches. Again, this is one that probably a lot of people don't quite have their minds wrapped around exactly what they're doing and how it's working, and it's probably going to be a little bit of time to measure how effective those people are because it's relatively new. But again, the prevailing is people are saying, no, don't cut those with, actually, staff is the closest at a 45, 46% split there. And then I think we have one other question on the report. The overall satisfaction, how likely would it be to recommend the district to a friend or neighbor? You ended up at a 6.35, which is above average. You can see that more people are in neutral or north than neutral, of course, south. So it's, that's good information to have, and you're, you've got some solid results there. I think that's it for our board. That is. So questions on the survey or what it means?
Maria, go ahead.
Just a quick question, and I don't know if this is a question for you or a question for administration, but there were comments, like reform comments that were submitted, I'm sure, as well. Will we receive a copy of those comments or a summary?
Yes. So what we're doing, and actually working on it this week, is we do what we call a comment theme analysis. We read all the comments, and then we pick out what are the prevailing themes, and then we kind of base verbatim. These are, you know, these are 10 or 12 or 15 items to support this theme, so we're working on that right now. So you'll definitely be getting that, but it just takes a little bit longer to put together.
Doctor, thank you.
Additional questions on the survey and the presentation from Bill this evening? Dr. Sample, anything else you'd like to clarify or address Bill with, or the board?
No, not, not really. I know that not everybody was here four years ago as we went through this process. Probably the most important thing that I can stress is that we trust the professionals, and I know that Bill has mentioned this several times, and we've worked closely with him. And I started in 2008, so it's the districts that choose to get either a little greedier or think that they know their community a little bit better. Bill, granted, and admittedly does not know our community, but he certainly knows data. And so just to be sure that we trust is exactly what we hired him for, and his recommendations and his summary. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Just a reminder to the board, we've all seen the timeline. This is informational only. This is the first time we've seen this as a board. Thank you to Bill and School Perceptions, not only for the survey but for the presentation this evening. We'll continue to follow that timeline in the committee process and through the board work. Thank you, everyone, for going through that this evening. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the Merrill High School Course Description Book for 2022-2023 school year. We had attached a topic summary sheet from Principal Shannon Murray and a recommended motion from our CTP committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
Will we approve the end of the Course Description Book for the 2022-2023 school year and continue?
A motion by Maria. Do we have a second? Second by Nubs. Do we have any questions or discussion on that motion or this topic this evening? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is approval of cost rate for pool usage. There's a attached topic summary sheet from Edward Dunn. Recommended motion from our finance human resources committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Kendra?
A motion to approve the fiscal year trying to pull overhead cost rate to 25.32 per the hour for audit purposes.
Motion by Kendra, second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this particular topic or motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the proposed fiscal year 23 budget development calendar. The attached topic summary sheet from Edward Dunn. Recommended motion from our finance human resources committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Brett?
Regarding the motion to approve the fiscal year 23 budget development calendar.
A motion by Brett. Do we have a second? Second by Chad. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next on our agenda this evening is technical corrections to policies 5513 and policy 5410. For by law, 0131.1, the superintendent has authorized to review and make technical corrections to policies that have already been adopted through formal rulemaking procedures. Superintendent shall inform the board of any such changes at the next regular board meeting, such as this evening. The facility committee reviewed these policies and had some discussions on some technical changes, and that's what we're making everybody aware of this evening. Any board members have any questions on those technical corrections this evening? Hearing none. We will move to the consent agenda. Before I ask someone to read that, I'll ask if anyone wants anything pulled off of our consent agenda to be handled separately this evening. Pulled off October 26. Staying from October 26. Okay, so we'll make that note at the end. Thank you, Nubs. Hearing nothing to be pulled, I would ask if someone would be willing to motion for the consent agenda this evening? Maria?
Will we approve the consent agenda items A through E, which includes minutes of the October 26, 2021, October 27, 2021, with the revised personnel report attached to it. November 2, 2021, and November 10, 2021 meetings. Second reading of policy 7300, disposition of district property. Claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling $3,775,132. Personnel report as presented contingent upon the satisfaction of the appropriate liquidated damages for resignations as applicable and donations totaling $19,484.98.
We have a motion by Maria. Do we have a second? Second by Kendra. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions this evening? Maria?
I'll stay in from a portion of October 26 and 27, minutes for the portion of the meeting that I was not present.
Thank you. Nubs, did you say you were staying from October 26? Okay. Chad?
I'll stay in from a portion of October 26.
All right. Thank you. All those notes will be added on that. Thank you, Tammy and Ron, for taking it down. Just a reminder that we go through committee work unless we are starting those topics right here at the board level, so items for future meetings can't be discussed here or recommended here. Otherwise, we can talk to chairs of respective committees. Does anyone have items that they would like to bring up this evening? Ron?
Did we go on the consent agenda?
We didn't? Okay, all right, got it. Any items for future meetings? Otherwise as stated, please contact myself or Dr. Sample for agenda items for December meetings for your committee chairs for the upcoming committee meetings in December. Just a reminder that tomorrow morning, there is a radio program approximately 8:15 a.m. on Blue Jay 730 radio. Dr. Sample and myself will review tonight's meeting. Future meetings for the board is the finance human resources committee meeting on Wednesday, December 1st at 4:30 in the boardroom. CTP or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee next meets on Wednesday, the 8th at 4:30 p.m. in the boardroom. We do have a special board meeting slated for Thursday, December 9th at 5:00 p.m. in the boardroom to interview board candidates. Head Start Policy Council meeting, the next meet on Tuesday, December 14th at 5:30 p.m. at I Am a School for Young Learner. Our next regular board meeting is Wednesday, December 15th at 5:30 p.m. Either in the boardroom or here at the auditorium. Stay tuned for that posting. Next on our agenda is contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section 19.85, grant one, grant C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of a public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Grant E, deliberating on negotiation of the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Grant F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories and disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where grant B applies, which if discussed in public, be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problem or investigation. Grant G, inferring legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Purpose of the closed session is for discussion of potential action on approving and leaving absence for two employees, consideration and potential action of immediate retirement proposal for a professional staff member. The superintendent evaluation initial dialogue in preparation and to conduct specified public business which for competitive or bargaining reasons requires a closed session to which consideration and discussion of the sale of personal and real property associated with Maple Grove School and the division of assets and liabilities between Merrill Area Common Public School District and Athens School District, which may occur as a result of granting petitions for detachment of property in the town of Hamburg and to take action regarding the same. The board may reconvene in open session and may take action upon the matters discussed during the closed session portion of the meeting. Do we have that motion this evening? Motion by Nubs, second by Maria. Do we have a roll call on that, please, Tammy?
Kendra Ossman?
Aye.
Maria Volpe?
Aye.
Brett Waller?
Aye.
Nubs Ashdrut?
Aye.
Chad Krueger?
Aye.
Ron Lumber?
Aye.
Kevin Blake?
Aye. Thank you all for your attendance. As stated, we may be coming back into open session after closed session. I do not know what time have will be. I apologize for that. We'll do our best to be back here as soon as possible. If you need assistance to transition to our course application board.